Okay, I'd like to call this regular school board meeting of the Palomar Eagle Area School District School Board's order at 7:00 PM. Can we have the roll call, please?
Jean Reed.
Here.
Mitzi Reschowski.
Here.
Michael Eddy.
Here.
Tara LaRoy.
Here.
Zachary Rutowski.
Here.
Kristiana Williams.
Here.
Doris Carson.
Here.
Business Manager Alfredo Balmas. Balmasita.
Here.
Okay, we definitely have a quorum. I'll read the district mission statement. "To ensure that students excel in intellect and virtue inspired by innovative educators who engage and challenge each individual." Would you all join me for the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to ask that we table action item C. We're lacking a little bit of paperwork we need before we can go forth with that. So hopefully we will have that by tomorrow. So can, does anybody else have any additions or changes to the agenda?
I would like to move consent agenda to item C, resignations and retirements to action items, please.
Okay, so we will put that as action item I. Resignations and retirements. Any other changes or additions? Yeah, we have to do a, we need a motion then to approve the agenda as adjusted. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor? Opposed? Amended? Agenda is approved. Public comment? Do we have any? We do not get any written public comments in for this meetings or any? Okay. Board monitoring. A, discussion of USDA lunch labor until December 31st. Does everyone speaking on that? I know we got in our board packet the fact that we have been approved to do free lunches from now through the end of December, which is awesome for our students and I think it's good for our staff too. It's a really nice thing. So I think, I know we're voting on approving that. Did you have something Tara?
I have a question on that. I know when we did it over the summer, it was open to all members of the community. Is this the same thing again or is this just restricted by for our students?
What could it be?
For the students?
Let me ask.
She's not doing anything to go up like, we are for the virtual kids, but I don't know how, we don't want people in the building, so I don't know how we would do that.
Oh, you're talking about virtual students that lady coming to pick up? Yes, they're covered too.
They're covered, but if they're not a current student, like a homeschool student could not come and get that where it is before they could.
As far as I know, no, but let me ask.
Do you think he'll get that answer right now or do you want us to come back to that?
I'll not send you the update by probably tomorrow.
Okay. Okay, B, discussion of food service price increase after the free lunch ends. We also got that red board packet and I believe that explained it as it's a required increase based on the amount of money we spent on lunches last year. Anything further to add for that?
No, just probably something allocated. We were receiving money on the meals and stuff like that.
Okay, committee reports. Public relations met August 19th. Tara?
Um, yeah, just sort of recap real quick. We talked about a few things. We want to make sure that we, I don't want to say revive, but we keep the honor of educator program active. We talked about expanding community support, visible Mesa, such as the Purple Mayfair, things like that going up. We talked about ways to support our staff and offer classroom support through volunteers or faculty class programs possibly asking for teacher wish lists, things like that. And we can get people involved, those volunteers, without necessarily being physically involved in the building because we do not have that elsewhere. We had discussions on building, like community transparency and that Kristiana was very good at, thank you for your ideas and thoughts on that. So we're constantly working on ways that we can become better and more transparent, communicating with the community as a whole. One of them we talked about was being able to livestream board meetings and things like that and help expedite and help. I'm sure that I mean that tonight, but that is something that we talked about, making that whole process better and easier. And then we had updates from our PR coordinator, Pam's been doing a great job. Facebook postings has real positive feedback on the teacher spotlight she's been doing. So a lot of the positive stuff I was thinking of. And I know, I mean, out in the community too, I've been hearing a lot of real positive feedback as well. I think everyone's is doing their job if we are.
Thank you. Buildings and grounds met this evening prior to this meeting?
Yeah, we talked about, we provided some repairs to some of the AC units. Those seem to be holding in place. But we should, you know, budget maybe something for the future. We talked about that the playground equipment repair, we're going to repair what we can and we're going to take down maybe some things that need to be taken down. Trucks, transportation, there was a leasing, leasing idea brought this evening. And then there was also another thought that there might be a grant available for us to look at. So Rich and Al, they're going to look into those things and bring that back next month. So we're going to bring it to finance so that we can look at the dollars and the cents of it and add it to the board agenda for October so that a decision can be made. The question was raised about whether or not we had enough staff or the proper procedures in PPD for cleaning the buildings. We were reassured that everything is in place and functioning properly. Staff is still an issue as I mentioned, but you know, that's an ongoing thing. The other item to that piece is that in case, you know, in case there is a positive thing on the COVID is, you know, what would be part of our plan is are we going to clean up ourselves? Is there going to be an outside service? So they're going to bring that back next month and talk about that. And then lastly, there was a bunch of different things that were brought to topic as far as having a bazaar or an athletic fundraiser. And the recommendation is that to the board is that that should be an administrative decision and not brought to building grounds. So that's it.
Thank you, Michael. Finance committee, Mitzi.
Finance committee met tonight at 6 o'clock. We reviewed vouchers, payments and financial reports and once again, very happy to let everyone know that we pulled out. We are nowhere near being broke. So we anticipate in addition to our fundraising, so that's very exciting. We will think out an entire board budget workshop on September 22nd at 6 o'clock. So that will be something where we talk about our budget proof that we will prove in October. We reviewed our debt status and we are currently on our payments and there's no issue of making payments. So once again, financial crisis needs to be availed and we've discussed enrollment and I'm very happy while we don't have third Friday numbers. I'm very happy to report that we're very consistent with our numbers last year. So despite lots of rumors and PR conflict, we are holding our calm and our press will continue a trend of going upward. We cast the exploring, being prudent and with an eye to long range planning and possibilities that our future doesn't continue as rosy as it is. We are passing the conversion of this building to a K-12, to buildings and grounds for exploration here for years on the road if necessary. We discussed the food service system that we're just in, could be in board monitoring and it is what it is and that's all we want.
Thank you. Good financial reports. Okay, administrative principal reports since first week of school. So assuming you guys have really exciting things to tell us.
We'll stand up.
I'm going first. You are?
I got it. I got it. I'm ready for it. Um, you know, thank you. You got to go with the session. Today I think it feels a little bit more normal. Got to pass that first week of school, which everybody around me. Um, we started last week in homeroom. My department put together videos and all of our COVID stuff and we went through that. It was good. Really? I mean, it's been fine. It's been pretty smooth. You know, we have a couple of hiccups here and there with things, but talking a lot to staff about it. The more consistent they are, the better things are. You know, this is kind of where we are right now, hoping that it won't last forever. Today was our first rainy day, which is a bummer because no outside lunch, no outside fires. Really can't beat this coldness soon, so hoping that turns a corner. I was able last Thursday to get in all my new teachers classrooms for a little bit of a wander. All doing a really good job in some kind of almost every class. So that's going to do it. Things are rolling like never before. I guess they might have to bunch them in there. Is there anything we want to know about?
No, I don't have it.
Somebody got kick hairs. You're crying more than I do. But what's actually going on?
We get a couple more weeks.
I do want to say as, as parents of kids in middle school and a high school, I have heard nothing but really, really good thing. And especially the new teachers. I have heard phenomenal feedback from students and parents already. And I mean, the other teachers have some of the style and the talent and the spirit. I'm really excited to hear that.
Yes.
Kudos to everyone.
They've really done really well. We were able to hire a nice mix of newbies and not newbies, so that's good. Having sixth grade up here really is smooth. You know, they're doing a nice job moving back and forth between their rooms. There hasn't really been any issue with that. I think they're enjoying a little bit more of the freedom. We're going to help with some of that. We did decide not to have that change, so their vibe is a little bit more like elementary vibe still. It's nice. That works. It's just kind of a lot to make them do, so they're doing some different things.
Yeah, we love that.
Yeah, so that was probably a better idea. That was my probably a teacher's idea. I would take credit for that. But yeah, I mean, really, everybody's here and we're staff and dealing with the bums with lunch. You know, it just is getting the new serving procedures and having a little one at high school lunch. I will admit the first day, some of those kids did not have a lot of time to eat, but, but it's definitely gotten better every day. And I said they are a little bit spoiled. They're using candy at night for about four minutes and now it's a little bit longer. It's not that they're eating out front and out back and all of that. Like today, I think the weather was a little bit of a downer, not being able to go out. We're using the gym and the cafeteria and the library and all of that as well. So maybe things seem, things seem good to me.
Thanks, Carrie. And maybe you have a staff meeting tomorrow. So tell your whole staff, thank you for all the good things we're hearing. Katie?
Elementary is a fun, exciting couple of days. Every student has the adjustable landers for their own mask and these have been a lifesaver rather than seeing hundreds of masks on the floor. You just find them on hooks in the hallway and things like that. So get those who put them up and they need them and take them down. They're adjustable for the, for the youngest students, for the older students. Started our meeting with a 4K 5K, we allow outside of the lawn. And I think that was a very gentle way to get some of our 4K 5K parents. Why do I get? Didn't even. It's just our thing. It was a very positive start. Our numbers are the two eight and they're growing every day. We have two more cuddles starting on Thursday. We're finding that a flat damage from the White Water area, two kids enjoying our district and we're welcoming them in day by day. It was a wonderful, good atmosphere of combining two different cultures. If I had to go and know where two different schools personally, I don't think that I would be a parent. Rather than approaching things the Eagle Way or the Palomar Way, we're approaching things with the new way we do things with such a well-known number of students. And so working through some of those logistical pieces and making things fluid for children. I walked in the classes and noticed things like virtual learners enjoying the halls with us, virtual tours in the classroom. We have students who are doing a lot of relationship building pieces. This center has a really neat like black like shirt thing. She tried to teach kids to see how physical terms are. But it's been great to see kids in the building and back with the students and learning and laughing. And then I looked for Aunt Gilly today on the way out of the student leaving and I said goodbye to this third grade student and they looked at me and said goodbye in request. They didn't have to, you know, because this is kind of a sign of request. So hopefully by tomorrow I will give my name back. Question for anything? I just wanted to make a few comments. I had two parents who adopted me as board robber after the first few days. And I just wanted to share some of the really cool things that have been said to me. One of my favorite one that made me feel really good was she said, "My son came home and he said the best part of his day is he got to see the Palomar kids." And someone else said, "My daughter came home and the best part of her day was she got to see the Eagle kids." And another parent said, "You know, this consolidation we should have done this years ago." She said, "This is the best idea the district has had and it's going so well and we are so excited." The energy was just fabulous. Yeah, so kudos to you. Thank you for all your hard work. You came in about as hard a situation as you could come in and do with consolidation and COVID. And I think you've done fabulous jobs. Thank you. And I actually kudos to the staff. Absolutely every single person, every role and staff that's helping here. Just thanks to make sure that you've had a really great couple of days. And even with the door recessed today, you're really bigger here. So we sure great.
Thanks, Katie. Tell your staff as well that your parents said great things. Kaylee, do you have anything?
Uh, well, on the student services and people services side of it, we are on the special end. Having kids ground running, our staff has been working out since moving here new, just kind of meeting kids and then learning about their kids. We've got to build into those relationships and make things go down. We are very happy and welcoming. We have a lot of new students coming in that are kind of meeting services. So we're going to be adding to our elementary staff and help with that. Just going a little bit of aid services at middle school level. We're going to guide community support there. Looking at people services, both of our counselors are like hitting ground running, meeting with kids in small groups and individual and beginning in classroom. We're creating at both levels, elementary and going to high school. And Lisa Johnson, our previous school nurse who is working with Fort Healthcare, has been in quite a bit, helping us in some of our health plans with some of our students. And helping us with just basically just making it easy with how we got going and as we translate over to our new nurse, which I believe is happening soon. So, yeah, nope, things are going good. We're smooth. We're working. We're hitting ground running. Anything you want to add?
Thank you, Kaylee. Any further questions of anyone to the administrators? Al, your business reports later, unless you want it to go up. Okay, consent agenda. Can we have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus C?
I can move to approve the consent agenda with the mission of study.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda carries. Action items. A, second reading of the following revised policies as recommended by NAOLA.
I'll make a motion to consider approval of the second reading of the following revised policies as recommended by NAOLA, section 8000, coronavirus C-11 and 19, policy 8420.01, evidences and candidates.
Any questions or further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. B, consider approval of the Panthers baseball boosters as a recognized district support organization for this school year.
Make a motion to consider approval of the Panthers baseball boosters as a recognized district support organization for this school year.
Any further discussion?
I have a question. Now, there are form. It says see Bible, but I never saw the Bible. Did I miss it? No, they weren't there?
We can send them out. They sent them to us. We just typically don't include that in the packet, but we'll get them to you.
Okay, just so that they're on my list?
They are.
Any other questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. C has been tabled. D, consider approval of waiving fourth quarter grades of student athletes for WIAA recommendations. We got the information in from Joel. It would allow the students to participate through Kerry and probably.
So normally we look at quarter grade previous to determine eligibility for the next sports season. So fourth quarter grades determine eligibility for fall sports. WIAA sets a minimum and then district can have a requirement above that. They're recommending waiving any ineligibility and then using your next grading period, which for us would be progress report to monitor, monitor students. You're talking, Joel and I think you're talking two or three kids and, and more in support of allowing them to play and checking their grades in three weeks and making sure they're where they need to be.
Do we have a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to consider approval of waiving the fourth quarter grades of student athletes for WIAA recommendations.
Any further discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Sorry, I have a few questions. So did, I never saw any follow-up. Did we come up with a number of how many children it is?
I think it's two.
It's two.
So you got to keep in mind, everything just officially started. So volleyball and, and football just officially started yesterday. So we're still collecting paperwork and some of that. So I would say two, three max.
And our, our school felt like they provided enough intervention tactics to those students during the fourth quarter?
Well, so yes, I would say yes. I would say both those students had, I personally can tell you both those students had more than enough contact. But given kind of the virtual environment and statewide stuff, that's why WIAA, WIAA is recommending, no. And keep in mind, these are quarter grades and credit is tied to semester grades. So a student still could have earned their credit and failed the quarter. That, that's a loop that's always hard for people who don't have high school kids. So towards the end of the, of the quarter last year, we might have just been pushing for any points we could so they could pass semester and focusing there. But they still may have failed the quarter grade. The other thing to keep in mind is nobody got a D. And normally D's would factor into GPA because we changed all those to passes. Cause that was a little bit better for the students. So really the GPA don't accurately reflect grades anyway. So, and part of waiving it would maybe allow for, for circumstances beyond our control, families that have a lot of kids, you know, other things going on at home and things like that.
So if we waived this, but they'll be reevaluated?
So at our next grading period, which will be progress report, the end of September, Joel and I will look at, normally we do quarters. So we will look at the students who would have been ineligible and make sure they're eligible. And if we're not, then we'll put that weekly grade check and some of those things in place so their quarter grades are where they need to be. Does that make sense? Normally kids who are ineligible sit for a period of days and then they go on a weekly monitor before they can play to make sure their grades are up by the next grading period. Does that make sense?
It, it sort of is, yes.
Yeah. The point is, if you just take it away from them, they don't have any motivation to keep their grades up. So the point is to make them sit and then monitor so they keep their grades where they need to be. So when the next term comes around, they're always going to be tested.
And so the monitoring will start now?
No, it'll start after progress report. So we'll give them these three weeks and then they'll start monitoring after progress report to make sure they're good. And we'll probably, like you said, straight kid. Joel will probably be watching them anyway. But officially monitoring a progress report is what most like.
And then they have a two quarter to pull.
Yeah, they have to tell quarter to get their grades up. Yeah. And that would be more important than ever with fourth quarter starting later because football will for sure push past that fourth quarter grading mark where it doesn't usually. Usually down before those grades are applied. They'll carry more trouble.
Any further questions or clarification needed? We'll revote. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. E, consider approval of charging a $25 cleaning fee for use of school facilities. We need a motion in a second then we can discuss it.
I'll make a motion to, to do $25 cleaning fees for these facilities.
Any discussion?
You mentioned that you didn't want any of the functions that are here to fundraise to have that be applied. Is that, are you still, still wanting that or?
I, I don't think in discussion time, I do not think us charging booster organizations or organizations that are fundraising for our students and the children of this district, I, I don't feel right to charging them. I think what we need for this is an actual, either a policy or just somewhat of a way to distinguish between outside groups that may include people that are renting our facilities or not, may not even be district residents. To those who are actually using the facilities for somewhat like the band boosters doing, you know, top of night before children band, you know, those things. I'd like to see it differentiated. So I don't know if we can send that back to committee or to the administration to come with us for something a little more. Differentiating in who's using, but does anyone else have any thoughts on that?
I would agree with you. I don't think that organizations that are here or sponsored, as we just did the baseball boosters, I don't think that they should be obligated to pay the cleaning fee. However, if an outside organization or an outside district would use our facilities, I think that they should be having to pay some sort of fee. And I almost think that it should be a sliding scale on the number of people involved and kind of the distribution of the people who came to the facility. I think it needs more work.
And is this, are we just talking this as a temporary COVID-related cleaning fee? Cause I almost think if we're talking large groups in the long-term phases that maybe should be looked at. Cause if we are spending so much of our own resources for some of these events, we're not getting properly reimbursed for our expenses.
I think it was originally drawn up as for the community center itself. And I think it kind of expanded to cover more than that. When we originally discussed this a couple of months ago, I think we were just talking about the community center, not the gym.
Yeah, and like a rec leave, like people coming and playing basketball, those kinds of things. But it just needs to grow. For your general expectations as well, it was, I don't think it was better than for the boosters or for students, allowing that to come again. But yeah, this is maybe specific in the policy.
Tracy, do you have something?
We have administrative guidelines that go along with our policy that does differentiate between different types of groups and what the fees for use of each classroom or gym or, you know, whatever would be for each one of those groups. It does specify in there that there is a cleaning fee if there's excessive cleaning needed or a janitor is needed for the events. But yes, we may want to clarify in those administrative guidelines that due to COVID, there will be potentially an extra charge for, you know, cleaning that isn't a normal cleaning that would have to be done. But I think it's just a clarification within that guideline.
Okay, so we have our motion in a second for just the blanket $25 fee. So if we're not in agreement with that, we wouldn't vote no, obviously. But we can then send it back to get more information and perhaps a sliding scale or something for the next meeting. So we still throw the motion. All of those in favor of approving the charging with $25 cleaning fee, say aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion fails. Okay, consider approval of Performance Fox River as our food service vendor for 2021 school year. We have information from Annette in the board packet. We have a motion for that.
I would move to approve, um, Performance Fox River as food service vendor for 2020 to 2021 school year.
Second.
Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Consider approval of Kemp's Dairy with Wailington Dairy Pollers as milk vendor for this year.
I would move to approve Kemp's Dairy with Wailington Dairy Pollers as milk vendor for 2021 school year.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Just curious, Kemp's is from Minnesota. How come we didn't find a Wisconsin milk?
We can make a note of that.
I just, given that we're in Wisconsin, I'm not a Wisconsinian, but it's just interesting.
Want to ask Annette that now? All right.
It must have been price, I assume.
Well, and I know she had said in her email that she had tried getting additional price, food and milk pricing, and some of those companies were not responsive. So, she may be able to try to, you know, do that. And the same with the company that is actually providing customer service, which I think is very important.
Well, I think they did make a big hit. This is one of the areas that got hit with COVID because of food and milk market. That was on, so people might have just gone out. I don't know what, but it was a disturbed market. Whatever, I just thought, I just know.
Your birthday, okay. Any further discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. H. Approval, consider approval of Cano Gold as bread vendor.
I would move that we approve Kemp's Gold as bread vendor for 2021 school year.
Any discussion?
I just would like to thank Annette for the thoroughness of the obtaining bids, pursuing our CISA suggestion and just the professionalism that was displayed in how she went about it and the fact that she delivered.
We'll note it. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Italian, this agenda made me hungry when I was going to residency. It's like, wow! Business managers report. Do you have anything further for us? Oh!
I have an item.
Oh, shoot! Yep, we added that one. Okay, we added resignations and retirements from the consent agenda to action items. So, we'll need a motion in a second, then we can discuss that.
I would move that we approve the resignations and retirements as listed, um, in consent agenda, item C. With the addition that we apply a handful language of, um, separation fee.
Well, we need a second, and then we can...
But that's my motion.
Oh, okay, you're adding that to the motion. Did everyone hear that?
I did.
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion.
The reason that I proposed that we move this to an action item is that we are, have started our school year. We have teachers that waited almost to the very last minute to write the contract. We have language in our handbook that does have a separation fee. I would like to see it utilized. I, I don't think it's fair to our families, to our students, to our taxpayers for this to be a problem.
So, but this is pretty normal. They shouldn't be surprised by this, correct?
It's in their handbook language. Our fees are very nominal compared to surrounding districts and other districts as I've been informed. And I, I think if people go in with the idea of signing a contract, I mean, it's only good until I find something better. I'm not okay like that. I think our, I think our administrators need to be allowed to do their job and have reliable employees.
So, how much should just provide?
Seven hundred and fifty now as per teacher. And I do think we need to look at that.
Can we move it up?
We can't, I don't believe, with our handbook language. But in the future, I think we should. And I think that should be a sliding scale as well. If someone were to leave today, I think they should pay more than seven hundred and fifty by the handbook language.
Um, the only thing I'd see unfair is that we've accepted a pass without, I think, the other ones that signed the last quarter. We accept all those resignations and didn't make that payment.
That's, that's a good point, it really is. But at some point, I mean, you're, you're kind of talking about this, that practice, right? I mean, it's always traditionally done, but I think at some point, you have to enough stuff to say, hey, you know, this can't be done anymore, and it's a policy.
And it's, it's their handbook.
They did institute it last year.
They did, either the outside or like that.
No, this board, this current board has not instituted.
No, no, I know. I'm just saying, it, it has been done in, in the past.
Yeah.
And I don't think not just as a recommendation, two of us to, as an action. And I guess, I just look at, we're so, these resignations were the middle of the August.
So, it's like three days before school starts.
Yes, and I don't think that's, I don't think we're asking too much. They signed the contract, it's their clause for their handbook. We're just pulling from the handbook.
I mean, how does it feel to, someone that's safe from people related? So, I could have, at least a teacher, probably say, uh, my parents could get safe from this. I'm gonna be safe here and resign. So, it's also important this situation to be considered far.
Well, wouldn't that be a situation, though, that they were taking leave? If we spoke with some staff members that they would be able to take leave if there was a concern of COVID, that would be, they're taking a job in another district.
Because the leave according to the Parents Act is basically to take care of someone that is actively sick. There's, there's not that much leave for, just because there's concern, scared, or unless if you have like a psychological issue that actually does give you a commocation or a right for a commutation. So, and I know that this lady, but, uh, I just, I mean, she decided to, that it's so risky.
I think that if there was E of LA, I'm not sure if it applies to TCU, but they did up to 12 weeks. And their job is protected at that point with this, with this straight resignation. Quit, walk away, I mean, I understand your concern.
So, Mitzi, your motion is to accept these but collect from these people?
To simple that, our, our handbook?
To follow the handbook guidelines and, and get the...
Enforce, enforce it. I don't remember all the words.
Katie?
I, I was gonna say, so, um, I would support enforcing the language. So, one of my resignations that portrayed a specific reason for leaving ended up from signing the contract with a different district, um, and there was no penalty for that. So, they approached us with a concern and said they wanted to leave for reason A and then found a different job elsewhere and had no consequences of the sort. And it literally was the week before, like, days before teacher in service came back, so, um...
I think another thing to take into consideration is those who resigned and those who signed a contract and then resigned. So, those who resigned from last year who didn't resign versus those who have signed, you go, wow, annoying. Kind of a plan for the area now.
Yeah, there is a big difference between having signed a contract and not.
Which is one.
Which is where the, where the fee applies.
Yeah, the fee would apply for those that have actually signed and committed to the 2020 school year.
Or those individuals signed contracts?
That's why there's so many in the resignation.
How could they resign if they didn't sign?
They signed a contract?
No, she said that's different than the ones that were resigned last year and then resigned after they had signed up.
Oh, yeah, I understand.
Yeah, that's all she said.
And those who resigned, you want to resolve them, right? Those who resigned. Either way.
So, there's administrative support for enacting the handbook and...
And really, I'll be honest, at $750, it's nominal compared to what some districts have charged you after August 1st to get out of contract.
And I'd say, in my experience, it's pretty common practice for districts to enforce that.
I just, I just don't understand why we didn't, why it's just not automatically enforced when we accepted the other regulations.
It was just brought to my attention. I didn't realize that it was there because...
It's in the handbook, you know, it can follow automatically?
That's a good question. Is that, who would, who would actually enforce that? Is it a straight level or is that on a board?
That would be on a straight-up level. I would assume that's the business office.
There was a gap after.
Right.
We could follow up with those that, well, it sounds like we did that last week.
I don't want to go directly after, but I think that because we already accepted the resignations, those people, that's what I'm interested. But these people tonight were accepting the resignations. And that's why we moved it to an action item, because I think it's something that's been dropped and we need to reexamine it. Because these people have spent, like, weeks, months of interviewing and getting people to have, some of them resigned with fees just because they're hopping to another district. That's not fair.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now, business managers report.
Um, well, according to the number we're having, we're pretty good. Uh, last year was, uh, we had a surplus, which, uh, means that our, uh, pretty much, nine hundred thousand dollars lost was, uh, averred. That price was averred, the, the loss was averred. Um, we're in a solid financial position and, uh, we're not pretty finance, but, uh, if we're good where we are at, um, we're doing, uh, still running to the audit at this point. Um, it's, the audits, there's a lot of audits that have been, um, just, uh, either were done or that, uh, still need to be funded through, like, uh, some still aren't, uh, accounts that are outside of the main general fund that the year records out, and I still have to get to it, uh, to the representation for the end of the year. Um, one, one bad side of not having, uh, parallel, uh, finish was, uh, that she just dropped some stuff that I, I just have to now gather all that information and get it to work. Um, so, I'm hoping that we can still get things done in a relatively timely manner. Um, we're still talking to the council, the auditors, and, uh, I may have to hire someone who's probably, I don't know, a little bit of a hand in this, switching us out of the, in the year for situations and then actually sort of do the process. And there's an entirely different type of need for these kinds of accounting processes so this won't happen again next year. A lot of information that was lost and I have to gather. And I was supposed by, uh, and, well, she's requesting, uh, a different set of, uh, provisions for, for it to come back and accomplish with this. So, I guess I have to talk about it in the next call. Yeah, in an open session, but, um, I just, uh, I will probably have to get some of that services from her because she's the person that can help us do it faster. I reached out to her, to, under our, our auditors, and they're basically saying, well, you do well to kind of go this route and, and have her do it explicitly. Uh, so, I, I need to say something that is becoming a little bit difficult or you're okay with it. I would like to have some of that. Probably would be what they, the days, uh, the days on service that she can probably do it quickly. Uh, but it is, I mean, to the point where I, I just don't have that information. I, I, I don't know how she put it together so I can match it and, like, go quickly. Uh, so other than that, I think that's the hardest part that I have seen so far. Um, just getting, getting those documents that are, you know, somewhere and were likely proposed in a way that she knows how to do it. Um, and we should be, after that, we should be in a better position. And the processes, like I said, are changing, I'm changing the pace of work on the path. So, we should be in a better position next year. Definitely, I'll, I'll know where I put this off. So, yeah, that's, that's, I guess, if anyone has any questions about any other items that they...
Any questions for all? Thank you. Announcement and board comments. I just wanted to bring attention to some of the consent agenda items, which is fundraisers and gifts and donations. Since we've got such supportive people, such supportive groups. Um, you have the baseball boosters, the athletic boosters, the PE band boosters. Those are just dedicated community people and parents who are working really hard to raise money and do wonderful things for our kids. And then the Gibson donations, the Health and Community Network donating healthy snacks, and the GoFundMe that helps feed school kids now, School Nutrition Foundation grant. Just so that people are aware of our, we work behind the scenes to do great things. Any other announcements or comments?
Just other than, this is a great team, I've seen this room tonight. This team right here is a great team. I'm sitting here, you know, week one hysteria, buses here, no buses there, you know, kids in seats and, you know, uh, wow. So, you know, like, just keep it up because we need you. We're doing great, Jack. For our sake.
I'll second that.
Great. There's a lot of upcoming meetings and events. They're all listed here. And then we can also add the annual meeting in October to that for the next time. We'll get that out every month, the agenda is for that. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
Oh, make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Any further, did you have a further comment? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meetings adjourned at 7:50.